Evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting. It's September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's called the order. Everyone, please rise for the pledge. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesco.
Here.
And we have Deputy Mayor Schmidt via Zoom.
I'm here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry.
I will.
No, he's here.
Oh, he's here.
We don't need to hang. Okay. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? All right. City manager?
Me tonight, I think.
All right. Council, have any board reports to share?
Um, I don't have a board report, but I want to read a really nice, looks like a hand, well, kind of. It's a real cute little thank you card that council members and city staff and everyone who works in our department got. And it's from a lady up on up on Hillcrest, and she read, she writes, "Thank you for your hard work, council guiding our city and community, keeping, keep up the good work, blessings in Christ, harvest for square church." And I think that that makes all our hard times worth it when we get something like this. So I just wanted to make sure that she was acknowledged for that effort.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah.
Anyone else? All right. Has everyone reviewed the consent agenda? We have a motion.
I move to accept the consent agenda. It's red.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda is published. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Right, we have presentation tonight, Bluegrass from the Forest. Dwayne Wilson with the team.
Excuse me. My name is Dwayne Wilson with Christmas Town Quanis, and we put on Bluegrass from the Forest. This year was our eighteenth annual, we missed one during COVID, but this was our eighteenth Bluegrass from the Forest. We had it was held July ninth through the eleventh of Mason County Youth Soccer. We we had to move the, the festival used to be at the Shelton High School campus, but they put a building where most of our parking land, and we missed the auditorium and the nice facilities there, but we just can't bring in the amount of people we do, and that's basic. So we moved the South Mason Youth Soccer. This year, we had twenty-three hundred people attend four concerts with seven bluegrass bands, a hundred and thirty attendees stayed at local hotels and Airbnbs in and near Shelton, fifty stayed with locally with friends and family, and approximately two hundred and fifty-eight campers camped on site. So it's basically a small city up there. Once, once everybody get, usually start coming in on Thursday, by Friday, they're mostly there. I mean, almost all of them are there, and then Saturday, a few more come in. Sunday, and then a few stay over to Monday, and then move out, move back to where they come from. So, excuse me. We had sixteen hundred and sixty fans travel forty-five miles or more, and a hundred came from outside the state. And then I'd like to bring these in. The ones that came from outside the state, just so you can see where they came from, Canada, South Carolina, Georgia, Florida, Colorado, Nevada, Tennessee, Oregon, Arizona, California, Idaho, and Texas. And, and these folks stayed, bought fuel and food, meal shop, that Monday is to come into it. I guess builders for source now, we get down, get the carts and roads. So it has an impact all through the community. And so I guess lastly, we'd like to thank the city of Shelton for your support, and we've already worked on next time. And are there any questions?
Yeah. Any questions for Dwayne?
I have, I have a question. What was the count, the very first one you had, and what year was that to now?
Well, I would say ah, it's probably grown by four or five times. You know, the first time we only had regional bands, we, we didn't have national bands. Now we bring in at least two, this time with South Carolina and San Francisco, and that brings the bigger amount of the, the people that really are hardcore bluegrass people come out to see those folks, but they won't come to just see regional. So that's why we went to the national. I think the first year I'm having a hard time remembering. I would say maybe fifteen hundred or something.
And what was, what was the date of the first one? What year?
It was in May, uh, may, I don't know the exact date, like May sixteenth or something.
Two thousand and four, probably.
I mean.
Two thousand and four, it was in that range.
In two thousand and four. Because we missed one because COVID. When we lucked out in two of the COVID years, they put on the restrictions the day after our events, and we never have had anybody call and say they got sick for COVID at our best. So, or write or text.
Twenty years and four or five times the amount of people.
Yep, I would say, if you think that's breaking the law, I'm kind of winging it. But yeah, it's, it's um, a lot more, a lot better attended, not so much from the bluegrass hardcore people, but Mason County is getting better also. So we're starting to get both where we really struggled. Everybody thought we were middle best, you know, Mason, me and my cousins up there playing, and you know, it's, it's a lot more sophisticated than that. So.
Any other questions for Dwayne? Thank you, Dwayne.
Well, thank you, and thanks for your support again. Later.
All right. We now have a presentation from the Finance Director, Mike Givens.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we're looking at the financial report for July. So each month, as I mentioned, it gives us in finance, just a little bit more data to better estimate where we're going to be as we round up the year. So bringing us seven months into the fiscal year increases our ability with just more data to make the forecast on. So in July, as you'll see on this slide here, the revenue is forecast to be approximately a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars higher than what we forecast in June. So I'm just doing the math there to compare what we had estimated the actual revenue to be, and it improves a little bit just by the information we have, what we're seeing coming in by way of receipts. And then expenses are estimated to be approximately two hundred and twenty-one thousand less than what we forecast in June. Again, by knowing what we're getting, paying, by taking a look at payrolls, et cetera, we're able to do a little bit better forecasting. So again, as with last month, the general fund budget variance is estimated to be in a much better position than we were discussing earlier in this fiscal year. So I'm pleased to tell you that. It's largely due to the hard work of staff in watching and monitoring budgets, and of course, the difficult reductions we've made in the form of reduced spending and reducing some positions that have taken place in two thousand and twenty-three. But where it's positioning us is in a much better place to be creating the two thousand and twenty-four budget, and we're lining up our expenses ongoing with what we're expecting in revenues. And so that's a much better position for us to be in. We'll have an unreserved fund balance, as you'll see there, of approximately one point two million dollars that we're estimating right now, and that's what I've been forecasting for our two thousand and twenty-four budget preparation. So that's one-time money that we can use for some things that we'll be presenting to you as the budget unfolds a little bit later in, into the fall. So again, I'm pleased, it's certainly not been without a whole lot of work by a lot of people to bring the general fund into a better position, but it is looking a lot better. So that's kind of where the general fund is. On page seven of the financial report, you'll see that the estimated fund balances are shown. On this page, again, as the year progresses, we're able to get a more accurate estimate of ending fund balance. As I've mentioned, this is something we use as we're developing the budget across the funds to really know what position we're going to be in as we start fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. So in finance, we use it a lot. The public work staff are working really hard. They depend on this a lot also in their regular funds as well as the capital funds to really know what position they're going to be in. So you'll notice that across the funds, we're estimating to be down in fund balances compared with where we were in two thousand and twenty-three at the beginning. That's not necessarily a bad thing. It simply means we're spending some money on projects, sometimes particularly in the area of public works. They've saved money in those capital funds to perform a project. So then that's naturally going to draw that fund balance down a bit. And that's the position we're in. It's, it doesn't mean we're in a bad financial position. It just means we're managing the monies we have to target projects and, and what's happening across those funds. So overall, I would tell you that things are looking good. It's giving us a good, I think, picture of where we want to be in two thousand and twenty-four. I am just anecdotally seeing a lot more involvement by staff and everyone in the process. So I'm hopeful it's even better budget that we're creating that more people understand and have input in. At the bottom of page seven is the citywide FTE, and I highlight this again because it's something we've added into the financial statements, and it changed a bit in July because we were able to fill some positions. So that's a good thing. In the general fund, this is as of, of course, July thirty-first. And as I mentioned last month, some of these vacancies were filled, and so we filled a position in public works, a position in police, and a position in community development. So at the end of June, our vacancies in the general fund that are budgeted and planned for were eight, and they're down to five. So I think that speaks well because having those positions filled allows us to do more work as a city, and particularly in those departments. And then the vacancies in the other funds over on the right side remain at three. So I think overall, that's looking good. It allows us to really track and where positions are as we're going into the development of the two thousand and twenty-four budget. We break those out a little bit more for you and the public to see where positions have been over the last few years so that it's so that we're all able to track those a little bit more. And then on page eight, we begin a review or an overview, I should say, of citywide expenditures and revenues, starting in the general fund and detailing the two thousand and twenty-three budget. The revenue and expenses realized through July, and then an estimated actual column and a net line showing revenue less expenditure. So the remainder of the report again are each fund broken down by where those revenues and expenses are coming in, and then, if you will, our net position in each fund. So that's the financial report. Nothing negative about it. Again, I think things are looking good. It shows that the city's getting a lot of work done. I did want to clarify something. Councilmember McDowell, at our study session last week, you asked me about what in the revenue line for the general fund are charges for goods and services? And off the top of my head, I think I said, well, it's fees. It includes a little bit more than that because that's a three-point-one-million-dollar budget line. So I duck into a little bit more, and it's revenue from the park district that comes into that. So a reimbursement, if you will, from the park district to cover the costs. And then recreation and activity fees, plan review fees, animal control inspection fee, and then another large amount of that, three-point-one-million-dollar is our interfund or indirect cost that the other departments are charged and then come back to us in the general fund. So
Thank you.
That, when I looked at it later, I thought, that's a lot of permits.
A lot of permits.
Anyway, thank you. That's all.
I think, thank you, Mike. Is there any other questions for Mike? Great job, Mike. And you might as well sit there. You're up next.
Oh, I am. That's true.
Before we go into public comments, Max, can you put up our instructions for public comment on this? Or go under business agenda, excuse me. Just want to touch base on our instructions for public comment. When called to the podium, state your name, and if you're a resident of the city, speaker shall remain at the podium to make comments and not approach the council or staff without express invitation of the mayor. Any related documents, printed comments, or materials this speaker would like distributed to the council or staff shall be delivered to the city clerk. It's a fish amount of coffee, seven copies, at least five minutes prior to the meeting. Remarks must be kept in no more than three minutes. The council may direct the city manager to follow up on any items that arise during public comment as appropriate. The council will not allow complaints against an individual staff member or council member, any person making personal or slanderous remarks who creates an unreasonable disruption while addressing the council shall be directed to cease by the mayor. And that's it. And now we're going into our business agenda, and Mike has a resolution for us for electronic fund transfer policy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. This is a policy that public agencies are being asked to adopt. It's particularly promoted by the state auditor's office. As you know, in recent years, there's been some high-profile hacking of information, and this policy and procedure puts in place, in particular, an electronic funds transfer policy that we would adhere to. It covers what the state auditor has asked to see, which is that policies should be adopted to establish effective internal control to protect electronic fund transfer transactions from internal and external threats. I know that Max and our IT department has looked at what the state auditor recommends. This is really for our practices where we're transmitting banking information, where we're asking for electronic fund transfers for our payment to vendors, and then as well, anytime we would initiate, there are instructions in there for wire transfers, which would be very limited because those typically cost the city, but there are times where we have to do that. If there's a property transaction or something like that, and this policy sets forth the procedures that we would follow. It also has in here the ACH procedures, which is the American Clearinghouse Procedures that we use for our payroll processing, where we're paying employees. It talks about that security of their information. If there's any kind of reach to the system that that would come to me, I would immediately report it to the city manager, and it would affect some process. The state auditor wants to be informed when these things happen. So they're looking at, and we owe it to both our protection of the public resource and our employees and vendors that we have a procedure in place that we're protecting their information. So this policy and procedure sets forth that for the city.
All right. Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anyone in the audience have to speak on this? All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to forward resolution number one-two-eight-eight-dash-zero-eight-two-three to the October third, twenty twenty-three action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions? Thank you. Makes sense to me.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in a second to approve resolution number one-two-eight-eight-dash-zero-eight-two-three to the October third, twenty twenty-three action agenda for further consideration. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Right. Now, in the action identified that Finance Director Mike Givens. Petty cash money.
Oh, sorry. I was, it's not that I want to leave. Sorry.
Mike given tonight.
Get it together. So the petty cash, there's no changes to this. As you recall, this is so that we can't have another staff member to back up at the front counter due to our staffing changes. So no changes to the original item.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Anyone sign up for public comment, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone want to speak? All right. Maybe I have a reading of resolution number one-two-eight-seven-dash-zero-eight-two-three.
Resolution number one-two-eight-seven-dash-zero-eight-two-three. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending the petty cash monies for various city departments.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number one-two-eight-seven-dash-zero-eight-two-three as presented.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions? All right. We have a motion in a second to approve resolution number one-two-eight-seven-dash-zero-eight-two-three as presented. All in favor say aye. 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 Motion carries. All right.
Yeah.
Now you can leave, Mike. Committee Economic Development Director Jay Hill has information about adopting the two thousand and twenty-one international fire code.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So when we brought this ordinance to you at your last meeting, there was, we were going to be adopting fairly quickly in accordance with the state's adoption cycle. We were just notified yesterday that the state has delayed adoption of the building code while they presumably review some other items and work some things out. So the state is now mandating an adoption date of March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. So as a result, what you have in front of you are some substitute ordinances that just change the effective date to March twenty twenty-four. And also I struck one of the whereas's that referred to adoption by October twentieth of this year. So again, with both of the ordinances for the adoption of the international fire code and the adoption of the international building code and the associated codes, those are all items that we've been mandated to do adoption by, by the state. Most of the tax changes that are going into our municipal code are just the local adoptions, how, how we take the state code and refer to things within our codes, or if there's any policies or ordinances that the city has created that can supersede those codes, that's the implementation. So that's we're, we're told to do it, but we're given a little bit of flexibility in how we go about doing that. And that's for both the IFC and IBC that are here tonight. So with that, there were changes from, from the last one, but again, they were just related to the dates and staff has recommended approval of adoption of ordinance.
Thank you. Donna, anyone want to speak? All right. We have a reading of ordinance number two-zero-zero-three-dash-zero-five-two-three.
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-three-dash-zero-five-two-three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, adopting the two thousand and twenty-one international fire code and amending chapter eighteen point zero five of the Shelton Municipal Code.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number two-zero-zero-three-dash-zero-five-two-three, adopted with two thousand and twenty-one international fire code and amending Shelton Municipal Code.
Second.
All right. Comments or question?
Can you explain what it, I know what it is, but maybe there's someone that doesn't quite understand what an international fire code is?
Yes, of course. So there's the International Code Council, and then through that, the Washington State Building Code Council. And they basically establish a set of best practices for what the safety of building structures and the development of human activities really needs to include. That's everything from road widths and turning radii for vehicles to, you know, the types of insulation that are required, separation between structures, so on and so on. And those are all designed, you know, based on looking back at how there were, there were fatalities or casualties as a result of some practices and what they could do to make them better. Or in the cases of like building codes and things like that, it's a combination of, of safety and looking for, you know, like energy efficiency and things like that. So there's these organizations that develop and promulgate these codes, and then the state requires the adoption by the, the local participating jurisdictions.
So buildings like this probably have to have sprinkler systems in them.
Correct.
Is there a certain size of a building?
Yes. So it depends on the occupancy of the structure, how many people are in it, the size of the building, the construction materials of the building, the use of the building, and so on. So that there's a kind of an algorithm, if you will, of, of when that gets triggered.
Essentially a risk factor, right, Jay? I mean.
Correct.
Based on the use, the occupancy is the use.
So a lot of people that have buildings anywhere, they can say, well, ten years ago, that wasn't implemented, but now I have to do that. That's because the codes change.
It, it, it depends on the triggers related to the code. It's, it's not just a standard, like across the board, everybody has to have sprinklers. It's usually that the the trigger has changed. So, you know, it may be different square foot or different occupancy class or different type of construction. There's, there's different requirements for metal versus wood. There's a, there's a don't want to go on too long about it. And also, I'm not a certified building official, so I definitely don't want to go on too long about it. But there, it, there's essentially a formula when those things are required. The code prescribes that out and helps people find when things like sprinklers are required. Also, there, you can have more rigid standards than those adopted codes. A jurisdiction that I previously worked for, any single-family home, even over four thousand square feet required fire script. So, you know, the local jurisdiction decided to adopt that due to wildfire hazards. And so that you can, you can make those local amendments more, more rigid than the code, but not less rigid than the code.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number two-zero-zero-three-dash-zero-five-two-three, adopting the two thousand and twenty-one international fire code and amending Shelton Municipal Title eighteen. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Now Jay has information for us about adopting the two thousand and twenty-one international building code, which is probably the same spiel.
I, it's the exact same spiel. Actually, it's the, the same reason for changing the dates for the adoption and the same information about how the codes are generated and why are, why we're mandated by the state to adopt it. And so again, just moving it from October twentieth to March fifteenth. If there's any additional changes that come from the state, most of those are just encapsulated within the code. We don't necessarily need to incorporate them into our code because we've adopted the code wholesale. If there is anything that requires change to our local adoption, like if they renumber some things, we can move it. We'll, we'll bring that back in March, or as the date gets closer to fix that, but we're, we're not anticipating anything like that at this time.
All right. Anyone sign up for public comment, Donna?
No, there isn't.
Anyone like to speak? All right. We have a reading of ordinance number two-zero-zero-four-dash-zero-five-two-three.
Ordinance number two-zero-zero-four-dash-zero-five-two-three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, adopting the two thousand and twenty-one international building code and amending Title eighteen of the Shelton Municipal Code.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number two-zero-zero-four-dash-zero-five-two-three, adopted in two thousand and twenty twenty-one international building code and amending Shelton Municipal Code Title eighteen.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions? All right. We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number two-zero-zero-four-dash-zero-five-two-three, adopting the two thousand and twenty-one international building code and amending Shelton Municipal Code Title eighteen. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our last item from Jay is an interlocal agreement with Mason County for joint comprehensive planning. And you do get an award for not getting out of your seat every time.
So it's, it's good for squats.
All right.
Anyway, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. So as I presented at the last meeting, this is an item for joint comprehensive planning with Mason County. We are both in the same periodic update title, cycle for our comprehensive plans, and they're just a little bit, a few weeks ahead of us on, on getting their contracts underway and so on. We, the, the planning director for the county and myself, looked at where there were opportunities to collaborate and where there were opportunities to cost share that would allow us to split the same costs for doing the same work instead of doing it twice, because we're using the same consultant and you know, we use a lot of the same data sets and whatnot. The city of Shelton's data sets are a kind of a subset of the county's data sets that have to be collected for them anyway. So there's cost savings to the county by having us participate, and there's cost savings for us by using the things that they're producing. This interlocal agreement also sets up scenarios of responsibility where the, the county has agreed that we're taking the lead on urban growth area planning. So anything happening within the Shelton UGA, creating standards and moving the boundaries and things like that, we're, we're responsible. They'll cooperate and collaborate with us. And so the interlocal basically sets up a reimbursement to the county for what they've expended on those, those data sets that we were talking about. And then that comes out of the, the total budget that we set up of the two hundred thousand dollars for the combat budget. Happy to answer any other questions about the, the ILA or the comprehensive planning process.
Right. Donna, anyone sign up for public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak on that?
I, I do. Um, I think it's great that we have an interlocal agreement with the county. We can work with them, and they can work with us. It just makes things takes us a little bit of money and shows that we are interested in the entire county also. So it's really good. I like it.
Thanks, Commissioner McDowell. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the interlo- interlocal agreement for joint comprehensive planning with Mason County.
Second.
All right. Now do we have comments or questions from the council?
I'm sorry.
To back, Councilmember McDowell, I agree.
To back, Councilwoman Erin Mckell, I agree. I think it's great that we're working together with the county and I hope we can do that more often.
Right. We have a motion to second to approve the interlocal agreement for joint comprehensive planning with Mason County. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. All right. Brent Superintendent Public Works has details for amending the Shelton Municipal Codes for related sewer rates.
Yes, Council, this was presented at the last meeting and I'd like to just reiterate a couple of slides from the last meeting, slide five. Is the sewer GFCs, the proposed three thousand dollar new GFC maximum defensible was thirty seven hundred fifty six. And then slide six just shows our operating costs and rate funded capital projects for current and future years with the rate increase as proposed at last meeting. That's from water and then for sewer slide eight. The maximum, the principal GFC and then the proposed eight thousand GFC for sewer. And then slide nine has the same of the rate increases. There any further questions on the rates as proposed at last meeting?
Sure, let's get it. Let's see if anyone in the audience like to speak. Donna, anyone signed up?
There isn't anyone.
All right, we have a motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
We need to have a reading of the ordinance.
Sorry, I have a reading of ordinance number two zero one zero dash zero seven two three.
Ordinance number two zero one zero dash zero seven two three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter fourteen, fourteen point two eight of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to sewer rates.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move that we adopt ordinance number two zero one zero dash zero seven two three, removing sewer rates out of the code and placing them in the city's master fee schedule.
Thank you. Thank you. Comments or questions?
I have a comment. We look at these rates going up and we're going, oh my goodness, this is a burden on our citizens in Shelton. But we have to do this. We have to keep the water treatment sewer plant clean, water around shellfish farmers around the water. So it's a struggle, but as we see, it will even off. It will level out. It will keep ongoing forever. So we do have a light at the end of the tunnel on that. Which is good. Just hang in there.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to second to adopt ordinance number two zero one zero dash zero seven two three, removing sewer rates out of Shelton Municipal Code, placing them in the city's master fee schedule. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Okay, Brent, also information towards about the Shelton Municipal Code and water rates.
Yes, as we touched on, the first slides were for the water rates and there's no changes to propose.
All right, thank you, Brent. Anyone said a public comment, Donna?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone like to speak on the water? All right, maybe we're reading of ordinance number two zero one one dash zero seven two three.
Ordinance number two zero one one zero dash zero seven two three. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter fifteen point two eight of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to water rates.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move that we adopt ordinance number two zero one one dash zero seven two three, remove the water rates out of the Shelton Municipal Code and place them within the city's master fee schedule.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
I have a comment again. Same with the sewer. We have to, we have to go forward with this. Raising the water rate because we need, we need storage. And we don't want to end up having a town burn down because we don't have the storage for our water. We can get to it. So I, it's a, it's going to be a pinch for a while, but I think we'll be able to do it.
All right, any other comments or questions? We talked about this successfully last week. It was something that needs to be done at this, at this point, so we can keep staff and and have money to fix broken pipes and also certainly money away for either matching funds or, you know, direct funds to replace water tanks and it's just really important. I I did a little research on on what it costs to build a three bedroom house in the county if you wanted to put in a subject tank and and water and a subject tank would be anywhere between twelve and eighteen thousand dollars for for decent soil and up to fifty if the soil wasn't that great. And the water was was around twelve to also twenty thousand dollars. So and then we're looking at eleven thousand dollar total expense between water and sewer hookups in the city limit. So yeah, it doesn't sound great, but it sure sounds better than fifty thousand dollars. So we have a motion to second to adopt ordinance number two zero one one dash zero seven two three, removing water rates out of the Shelton Municipal Code, placing them within the city master fee schedule. All in favor, say aye. All right, Mark, do you have city manager report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. I think first and foremost, I'd like to recognize Captain Coastad back in the back of the room there. As you know, Captain Coastad has been appointed the next chief of police here, starting in November, when Chief Beeson leaves us for retirement. I'm really pleased that we have something, somebody of Captain Coastad's caliber and dedication to city, serving the city for over eighteen years, leading us through the most recent accreditation process. So I'm really looking forward to his leadership and his support by the entire department. I think is is unmatched, really, I mean, to a to a person within that department has provided signature on a letter of support for Captain Coastad. So it really speaks to the continuity and the ability to continue the good things that that department's been doing. So I don't, I won't put him on the spot tonight, but we we'll have the ability.
I was going to ask if he had anything to say. Chief Beeson wanted to actually make a little talk for a minute and then we can ask Officer Coastad, Captain Coastad, if he'd like to speak for a second.
Yeah, uh, Councilman Mayor, Deputy Mayor, I can't tell you how happy I am that Chris is going to be the next chief of police. One of the things I remember when I first started is that one of the comments I've heard a lot was, why aren't we promoting someone from within? And it's been my goal the time I've been here to try to do that. And I'm so happy that Chris is not only ready, but he's willing to take on that challenge. And I know that city is going to be in good hands through his leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Captain, you have a couple of comments you'd like to make?
Fair, good, and counsel, thank you. Just, I'm very appreciative of all the support I received for my department members, the city department members, council members yourselves and the committee members. Extremely grateful for all the support and I look forward to having more years as the chairman.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. No, absolutely. Anytime other other city staff wants to come to the podium and speak, we'll take advantage of that, right? Want to notify the council, we, myself and I know Mayor Nisco, soon Councilman Peterson will be in the chamber luncheon event on Thursday, correct? So we'll be talking about state of the city and now what's kind of been happening over the last year and what we will be looking forward to throughout all the departments in the city. Let's see, Nealon Park Playground is open, so that sealer has cured. Thankfully enough, we had some decent dry and sunny weather that cures that seal and we wait, you know, until the end of the summer to do that. So we're not closing it in the middle of summer to impact families and kids that are out of school. So that is, that is now open. Operational. And the last, last thing I have for you tonight is just talk about the Ignite Mason County Coalition, which is the coalition of local governments and entities that are in support of the Economic Development Administration and Federal Administration and the Recompute Project. So I have a letter in front of me that signifies the city as a stakeholder and supporter of this project. And as you know, there's basically six focus areas within this project. This first phase is applying for up to five hundred thousand dollars in planning. And then the next phase, we're successful there. It could be up to fifty million dollars, around fifty million dollars of investment in our community for workforce development, infrastructure improvements. System, let's see, support substance use disorder programs, get people back to work. Infrastructure development, workforce housing, particularly for the city of Shelton. Really talking about investments in the satellite treatment plant, the north side of of the city of Shelton, the upper mountain view water system, where we really could have some economic drivers in that area and partnership with other community entities like PUD three and the Port of Shelton in that area that could really be a catalyst and a future driver of of our community as far as economic development goes. So really excited that we have this opportunity and the work that's being done by all the partners, the Economic Development Council of Mason County. And so I'll keep you informed as we move forward. And you know, Deputy Mayor Schmidt has anything to add. He is serving on the EDC Board and is in trouble in this process.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, this is a long time coming and you know, a good synopsis overall. It's it's the coalition view of this is kind of similar to our comprehensive planning in our local agreement. If we want access to federal funds to support growth and the challenges that we see in Mason County, we need to do that in a coordinated way. And this coalition is one example of how we're going to pursue that in Mason County and the ties with our federal delegation as well as our state delegation in the thirty fifth district have been instrumental in giving us attention in Shelton. So we are looking now for those investment strategies for the long haul that make our community sustainable. Make an economy sustainable for our community. So when we get to these points of aging infrastructure and other challenges, you know, we're not necessarily needing to increase taxes and fees. We're going to get some help from the federal government to you know, to improve our infrastructure. So we don't have to put that cost burden on all of our, all of our ratepayers and residents in in Shelton. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity. And quite frankly, it's it's just the the beginning. The Economic Development Administration has several grant programs that in the past we haven't competed for. And many of them have a nexus with the initiatives that we are looking at and working on in the city here and over the next several years. And infrastructure is a big piece of that. But as Mark said, one of the major reasons and the major goals here, we have some workforce issues here in Mason County and in Shelton. And one of the key drivers of the Recompute Act and this grant process is to basically decrease the gap of folks who are a prime employment age. So age twenty five to fifty four, only about seventy percent of that group in Mason County is is working. And so our goal is to get those folks on the other end, get them into jobs that are good paying jobs from the community. Get them to work and find industries that fit the need for that section of the workforce because when that remaining section starts to go back to work, that capital will get circulated in the community. And again, will help the public sector agencies as well as local business continue to grow and do so in a responsible way. So I'm excited to see this move forward and appreciate the consideration and the attention from the city staff on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other comments? Council on that one?
Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have tonight.
That is all you have. All right. At this point, members of the public are invited to make public comment on any topic that wasn't on the agenda. Donna, do anyone sign up?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Craig Gregory.
Right.
Thank you, Mayor and council members and city staff. I would like to just speak tonight on the Public Works Design and Construction Standards that were amended and passed on the fifth of September. First of all, I just want to commend this council and Mayor Anisco for trying to solve a decades long problem that we've had in the city with construction standards and infill lots and sidewalks to nowhere. And trying to better clarify those for not only the citizens of Shelton, but also developers and builders within the community. The only issue that I want to bring up tonight is the timing of this being passed. As I think all of you are aware, I've got a very substantial development that has been started, designed and has been in the works for the better part of six months. We've had several meetings with city staff discussing the elements of that development under the code before September fifth. For infill lots, which all of the property that I own is considered infill lots. The code was passed to change that midstream of development or design of that project. And that is a very tough pill to swallow. I I I was trying to come up with an analogy that kind of fits what what I'm feeling and what I'm going through. And the best I could come up with was, and I know it's not a legal thing, but it would be like you starting a house and building, constructing a house. You designed it, you got building plans. You went and constructed that. You were within a couple of weeks of finishing that house up and all of a sudden the jurisdiction that you were building in passed a code to say, we're changing it. You got to tear that house down now and start over. That is a real issue for me, that there is not a time period of a set time where the the anybody that's in design can finish that design and move forward with that. Anybody that is thinking about designing a project would then know that they're falling under a different code and they could start designing towards that. And as I think all of you know, I've submitted eighty building permits to vest ourselves before the code actually was implemented. And all I'm asking for tonight is to have a discussion of whether the council can maybe push the implementation date back to accommodate so that we can continue through a negotiation of a developer's agreement that I think myself and my business partner, who is my son, would have the opportunity to continue to negotiate that developer's agreement in good faith under the code that was before September fifth. And I think we have been very good at giving the city and city staff exactly what they wanted out of that development. So I just ask that the city council have an open public discussion on this topic.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else signed up, Donna?
Yes, we do. We have Dean Jewett.
Good evening, Dean Jewett, Michael Wong, we're a member. I want to have a conversation, few different conversations, but I want to talk about Aberdeen. I'm going, wait a minute, we're not in Aberdeen, we're in Shelton. Where's Aberdeen? Why is Aberdeen relevant? Well, years ago, my wife and I took our boot truck down to Aberdeen and hung out in the winter there several different times. And we, we had electronic brake batteries stolen, we had propane tanks stolen. We were accosted and harassed by three people over and over again. You know, it's right, right downtown Aberdeen. Aberdeen was known for having a big major problem. They passed something that we all know that I'm very well fond of, and that's the no way light ordinance. And you know what? We went down there last Sunday and you know what? I didn't see a single street person. Why is it? Because they passed ordinance, they enforced the ordinance and it works. So I know that we have a small committee here that's making some very good strides and making some things happen. So I appreciate that. But like I said, I want to go the rest of the way. I want to take that that football and I want to cross the goal line and I want a touchdown. I do not want to do what we're doing halfway. We need to go all the way with this. It's very frustrating as a, you know, a business person and a citizen and a resident to see the things that we see. Mayor, you said it yourself, if we close Uh, Mayor, you said it yourself. If we close Brewer Park down, they're going to get pushed out everywhere else. You're right, but at least it's a start. So now we need to get proactive. And another thing that kind of bothers me about not being proactive, I, I turned in a report on the app 16 days ago and it just got closed. So did it get, did it get closed? Did somebody just go into the app and just click a switch or was there actually a resolution? What was the resolution? Why can't we fill out what the resolution was when we say that it's resolved? Who resolved it? Why they resolved it? How they resolved it? What are they going to do to stop it from happening again? I mean, you know, 16 days to get a response? That's pretty lame. Uh, the, uh, Walmart just started putting stickers on their shopping carts, obviously making it illegal. So where are we at with, you know, contacting them as a city co enforcement officer and saying you are out of compliance? Okay, let's not wait. Let's just get on it. Let's show them. Let's give them the law. Let's let them know where we're at with it. Uh, I was also made aware that there's several, uh, businesses in the financial, uh, arena. Uh, the old T Bank and Pennsyl Credit Union that are allowing people to stay on site. Okay, that is, that goes against our occupancy permit. You cannot do that. It's not their choice. The Guadalajara Church down there does the same thing. There's three or four of them that we need to take action on. That does not need to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Anyone else, Donna?
That's all we have. Signed up, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is anyone in the audience like to speak tonight? The council, I'm sure the session's nice. And our next meeting is Tuesday, October 3rd at 6:00 PM. The study session was scheduled for the 26th, it's been canceled. Meeting is adjourned at 6:00, 2:00 PM.